This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:03 PM on February 9th, 2023. Roll call. President. Jason did ask to be excused for work reasons?
Present.
Excellent. I have a call. Let's go, Legion. Mr. Parsons, would you go on?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Reminder that the planning committee does still have vacancies. Interested candidates should inquire at City Hall or contact the mayor. Again, you don't have to live in the city limits. As long as you live within three miles of the city, you can be on planning and parks board per our code. City payroll. As directed by the council last year, we have finally moved over to ADP for payroll services. So we're now outsourcing a majority of our payroll services, which will save our clerks more time than it will cost us for ADP to do the work. So that's all great news. LeMay collections. So there were some issues this week, I believe last week as well, on C Street north of Sixth, where the driver was not willing to back down the narrow street to collect the residents' garbage. And so they were asking them to bring all their trashes out to Sixth Street. If you're aware of there are people that live on North Sea Street, they're elderly and have medical issues and they're not capable of doing that. So initially, they had asked the city to get involved. And then apparently Reggie and Linda Smith got involved at some point and seems to have convinced LeMay to start coming down their street. We'll keep following up on that and thank our citizens for being so direct with our garbage collector. Clerk training. So all the clerks this week were trained by our city attorney on various code enforcement procedures. As you know, we've got lots of new faces in City Hall, and it's always good for a refresher on code enforcement to keep the city safe legally. Help do as much stuff in-house as we can to save money. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? No. Agenda approval. There are two changes to the agenda. First, the voucher total is slightly different. So we need to approve the agenda with the changes in voucher total. Also, I would like to add on council, a city business item number three, council to consider real estate purchase and sale agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for...
Agenda.
Agenda for February 9th, 2023, with the change in the voucher and the addition of the purchase and sales agreement.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with noted changes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? I opposed or I in favor? I in favor. Unanimous. Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for January 26th, 2023.
The motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the meeting minutes from January 26th. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. McIntosh. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the beginning of February vouchers of 2023 at $57,377.94. That was a one? Okay, $51,377.94.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers. We have a second for Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Lewis County Sheriff's Department, monthly report. Thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In January law enforcement totals, toward the month of January, 311 citizen contacts, 10 service calls, one of which was when a deputy was dedicated to the city of Vader, 29 traffic stops resulted in six infractions and one criminal citation for suspended, one felony arrest for felony level assault, and a free misdemeanor warrants.
The felony arrest wasn't the city limits?
The felony arrest wasn't the city limits. It had to do with a juvenile. It was highly intoxicated, assaulting, may fire personnel.
And did they, did they go, were they incarcerated or?
They, they can't mention the name, but the juvenile was taken to the hospital.
The only reason I ask is, I know that everybody always talks about the cost of the sheriff's department, he's getting our own. And every time somebody goes into jail, it costs, it would cost us a ton of money.
Everything is covered.
Yeah, everything's covered with that. So I just want to make.
In this particular case, again, she went to the hospital, not to juvenile.
That's also, health expenses is also relevant because local government could be on the hook for certain medical expenses, which again are covered by our contract with the sheriff's department.
Because the person was in custody.
Yes.
We get the bill. If the patient doesn't pay it, the county does.
Interesting.
Can we go into your website to see what is within your jurisdiction to help us or whether it's a civil issue and we don't come out? I don't know the definition of.
Yeah, there's no way you can go on the website because there's so many different variables that come into effect. So unfortunately, if you think that something may be criminal or there may be something law enforcement could do, call and we'll ask you all sorts of questions and make that determination based on, is there something we can do? Is there a law violation? Or is it something that has to be settled through the courts and they have to make that decision?
You guys are happy to do that, right? Don't answer the phone and make that determination.
Protect and serve.
Yeah, they're good. He does it with a smile, dude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, let's report. Lewis County PUD broadband update. Mr. Painter here is here, and I'm sorry, I forget your name, sir.
Jeff Bane.
Jeff Bane. Thank you for bringing those. Would have blinded our clerk with the projector if I'd put it up on the line.
I like this.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the time and the opportunity to provide the Vader City Council and members of the Vader community with an update on the PUD's fiber project. A little bit of background, and this would be turning to the second page in the packet that you have before you. Right at that late 2019, very early 2020, kind of when the pandemic hit, we realized that despite knowing all along that internet was an issue throughout Lewis, much of Lewis County, the pandemic really shone a spotlight on the nature of the problem, scope and severity of the problem. And it just so happened that right along that same time, legislators at state and federal level took note that broadband, lack of broadband connectivity was a severe issue in rural America. And so the pandemic shone a spotlight, and then state and feds basically created a bunch of different appropriations and funding opportunities. So the PUD, realizing that these funding opportunities, these kind of once in a lifetime funding opportunities really, were really at our doorstep, we decided to really take a hard look at what it would take to design internet infrastructure, broadband internet infrastructure throughout the entire key and service area. And we broke out the PUD service territory into seventeen service zones, one of which you'll see there to the south, number eight, is the Vader service zone. And Vader, just because of the nature of unserved broadband, unserved numbers here in the community, rose to the top of the list as an area of high need for broadband. And so we were able to early on apply for money to the Public Works Board for the Vader community and were successful. We received in late 2021, early 2022, an award announcement of $4.7 million for the Vader community to basically build fiber to the home infrastructure. So that's everything backbone, middle mile, and fiber to the home throughout the Vader community for a total of 1,135 passings. And so this funding is basically how it works is it will allow for grant funds to pay for the first forty percent of those 1,135 customers as an early adopter incentive. But the great thing is, is all of that backbone and that middle mile infrastructure, which is some of the most expensive of a broadband construction project, will be fully funded by the grant. And so we are currently in the permitted engineering design phase, and we will begin construction likely a little bit later this year with a completion of October 2026. So we'll get into maybe a little more details and open it up for questions specifically about the Vader community and what the plan is. But we also thought it might be helpful just to spend a couple of minutes talking about why we're doing fiber and why we're choosing to operate what's called an open access network. So we'll define that in a second. But before I hand it over to Mr. Bane, I'll just make mention, just as a matter of context, that the PUD has received grant awards for other communities throughout our service territory. So Vader isn't the only community that we're getting named. There are several others where we're building concurrently. So lots of construction going on, which is good for local jobs, local economy. But it also means that we're juggling lots of different projects at the same time. We're up to the task, but I just want you to have that general context that we're in multiple communities working on broadband. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Bane.
Yeah, Willie really explains a lot of great things, but we brought a couple examples of fiber that really is going to be in your neighborhood and take a look at. Kind of explain why, why fiber, right? If you look at this one right here, so this is, this is like I thought for us. There's 288 fibers in this level here. So this is going to be your backbone as you get to into your, your homes, your subdivisions and everything else. So definitely pass it around, take a look at it. The fiber itself, you'll notice it's just a little tiny, tiny things in there. So, but really why fiber? Factor speeds. So really the limitation on fiber is the electronics that's actually lining fiber. So as current technology comes out and speeds increase, we're going to be able to increase those speeds depending on the electronics. And we all know how satellite or even cell phones or whatnot, you really, your speeds come and go as saturation. You get more people on the network, speeds start to go down. You don't have this with a fiber optic network. It's durable. That fiber right there has a stainless steel lining inside underneath the black coating as armor. So it's not, it's not going to be foolproof. It can be damaged, but it is very, very strong. Symmetrical speeds. So when we talk about speeds of fiber, it's really important that if you're getting, you know, 150 megabits down, you need 150 megabits up to really get that symmetrical connection. So a lot of your Starlink and whatnot can say, we can give you great speeds down by getting it back up. So when we talk about that, it's like your communications that you know, your video conferences, getting things like that. So it's very important that that symmetrical's there really helps out coming down and going up. We're all being green and it saves a significant amount of energy compared to the old copper that we have. It takes a lot less to light it up and go. Lower latency and attenuation. So it means that your information is going to make it there. Like when you're, when you're on your conferences, you start to get chatter or somewhere starts to buffer and it starts, you know, you can't hear and you're talking, come on, come on, come on, come on. Really, it drops that down so you don't get, it makes your experience better. You know, and another important thing is unlimited data. So how much data do you, you know, you consume? Watch all the movies you want. You don't, well, a lot being throttled back. Like a lot of other times where you use 16 gig per month, you're going to be throttled back. And now you're down to that one day connection again, so whatever.
Yeah. And just to give you a sense of connectivity, when we did an internet speed test in early 2020 that gave us the data for to apply for these grant dollars. Yeah, most, most of the people in Vader only had 10 megabits download and right around one megabit upload. Pretty slow speeds, generally speaking. This fiber will give residential customers the ability to access 150 download and 150 upload. So significantly multiples faster. So it really is, in terms of technology out there, it's, it is right at the, you know, the leading edge of some of the best technology that's generally available in terms of what we call terrestrial or land-based internet. Okay? Why open access? So there's this term that you may have heard out and about, open access network. And so unlike traditionally, when you have a local internet service provider or telecom company come in and offer internet, they've already strung their own copper or whatever infrastructure and they are basically selling service to you as a customer on their privately held exclusive network, which has worked for lots of rural communities for a long time. But there's also a number of communities throughout the US that are really creating what are called open access networks. And that's where public agencies like the PUD are securing grant dollars. We're building this infrastructure that is going to be publicly owned for a long period of time. And then we are going to offer to different internet service providers the ability to use this infrastructure to offer customers access to service at various speeds and at various price points. And what that means then is through an open access network, you'll have not just a single internet service provider to choose from. You'll have a marketplace of multiple different internet service providers to choose from and free market. They will be competing for your business. So usually with open access networks open, what that means is if they're competing, it's lower prices. Usually they're more competitive and better customer service responsiveness and things of that nature. So we think, and we, and we've been working closely with other areas and other PUDs that have had open access networks recently. It's a good model because it gives customers more choices and better service at better prices. And so that's why we've gone with what's called open access. And what you'll see on this slide where it says why open access is a screenshot from one of the nearby PUDs, Mason PUD 3 up north. And that is a screenshot of just some of the different internet service providers that customers up there are able to choose from. And then if you, and I'm just going to take this next slide, yeah? When, let's say you were to click on that first option, advanced stream, you'll see for that, for that internet service provider, you have a couple of different options. You could go one gigabit or you could do 100 megabit, excuse me, one gigabit or 100 megabit. And you'll see the different price points there. So 64.95 a month or 59.95 a month. And that just kind of gives you a midpoint. So advanced stream isn't necessarily the cheapest, nor are they the most expensive. But that gives you a general sense of what kind of retail pricing residential customers in the bigger community can likely expect.
Definitely. We're going out and meeting with a lot of these fiber providers, internet providers, and making sure that they want to be on our network and give you that freedom. Toledo Telephone stepped up and said, you know, they'll, they'll be on our network. They'll be one of your options. So it's really good that we have these local partnerships to make sure that everybody gets served. So yeah, let's talk about the, your projects. So like Willie said before, we had 1,135 passings or homes that we can actually connect to like that. The grant itself was $4.7 million two years ago. So we're probably going to have some cost overruns and whatnot. We're, we're looking on how we can, you know, get more money for those and continue to do the good work we do. Like you said, the status we're doing right now is permitting work, working a lot with Parks Department. We've actually had contractors go out and look at all the poles to look at the heights of the conductor, make sure our poles are good, are high enough, and that we're covered. So when we go out and do the work, we're ready to go. And like Willie said, the completion is slated for October of 2026. So what does that mean? Completion is when a project needs to be completed for funds to be awarded. But as we get into your neighborhood areas and we have the facilities built, we're going to start lining people up and providing service if they sign up, you know, as soon as we can. So for 2026.
Yeah, and we don't have the exact timeline quite yet because we need to get a little more clear on exactly what the construction timeline looks like. But as Mr. Bane just said, well before the project completion date, we will reach out to customers on a case by case basis as we build fiber in front of your home and say, all right, there's fiber in front of your home and we have the electronics in place that can support service to you at this time. Do you want to sign up? And then that goes back to that 40% of where the grant pays for the first 40% of customers to have fiber installed from the road to their house essentially. And that was all really designed by the Public Works Board as an early adopter incentive. And so it is to the advantage of folks who are interested in this high-speed internet that they would want to be part of that first 40% early adopters group. Because, and the PUD has yet to figure out the details, but just like our power service, if there's a new customer who builds a new house, they have to pay what's called a line extension to have power run from wherever we currently have power, it's along the side of the road to their house. Well, there will be a similar related fee for line extension for fiber for those that aren't part of this 40% rate of dock. And so there really is an incentive for folks who want internet to be among the first to sign up for service. And again, it's, it's going to take a while for us to figure out all of the details of what, you know, that line extension fee is for those beyond the 40%. We have to do what's called a cost of service analysis, which is a lot of deep math that is way over my head on really analyzing how much it costs to get all of that done. But rest assured, the PUD is a cost-based utility. Because we are nonprofit, it's not like we're making profit on any of this, neither the service or the infrastructure itself. So whatever it costs to make that line extension, that cost simply gets passed on on a proportion basis. So with that, I'll just conclude by showing you the second to last slide. And apologies, it doesn't have road markers, but you know, I feel like we can pretty well identify the community based upon the map as it is. You'll see the general route that we have designed at this point. And you'll see that there are some little purple and green boxes. Those are cabinets for electronics primarily, or splitter points where we take this fiber and we basically split it off into a couple of more and more different directions. The, let's see, the, the blue lines are where the fiber will be run overhead using our existing power pole infrastructure. So where the power lines hang from the power poles, telecom infrastructure hangs below the power lines. So it'll be overhead or aerial as they call it. And then you'll see there are a few areas where there are red lines. And those are areas where we will have to bury the fiber underground. Underground is considerably more expensive. And so we're also able to get this project done within, close to the project budget that you've looked at because we're able to utilize the utilities existing network of power poles. So that's been a lot of talking apologies, but we wanted to make sure we've provided that general information. And so now happy to entertain any questions that folks have.
So the overhead question. So going into communities where PUD is already underground, obviously you're going to run the fiber optic underground as well? Okay.
If we don't have existing aerial facilities, yeah, that's the plan, underground.
What, what could we expect as far as during the construction, like how long you think you would be in Vader? And are there going to be like trucks everywhere like?
Definitely. There's, there's, so there's a two-year, but what, three-year build? Almost a three-year build.
Yeah, so two years actively.
Yeah, but you should, you have, you know, facilities all the way from I-5 all the way out to Ryderwood. So it's, it's a large project and you will see a lot of trucks around. They will have our placards on them. So they will be representative of us. But at a future meeting, we can come back and actually have that build out schedule.
Will PUD be performing the construction or?
No, it's all going to be bidable. There might be some make ready work, like putting in a larger pole where we need more clearance or whatnot that the PUD will do. The majority of the work will be by outside project.
That, that comes down to engineering and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Running a span.
Exactly. Yeah.
So the, the 1,135, that 40%, so it's 40% of that number? So 450, the first 454 homes.
They will not have to pay for the fiber to go from there, from the road to their house.
And then not to be snarky at all, but is this Vader?
Yes.
This one is?
Where's the railroad?
Like we're missing the.
Yeah. Yep, there's I-5, there's Walts Pond.
Basically center, center of all.
It's just so blown out. Apologies.
Oh, I see the railroad now.
If it's helpful, we can put some road markers and provide a copy.
How about glasses? Do you have those?
It's, this is big on the map.
Okay.
No new poles will be required. We're, we're going to strength the fiber along the existing poles that we have electric infrastructure. And the poles that are out there are more than well rated to handle the weight of.
We have sufficient poles already existing to compensate for all the people who say, I want it.
Yeah, yes.
If you want, you don't have a pole, right?
Get everybody with this.
Yeah, all the all the all the all the blue line is is overhead. So the vast majority of the bill in this community will be overhead using the existing power.
There's there there's only one line on there where you can actually see the strands on the inside of it.
Yeah. Um, you can pull one of these out.
But I was like, I was looking at it first. I was like, oh, it's copper. But yeah, you pull that out. There's like the whole.
There's twelve each tube. So each tube, the way it's designed, it each tube will handle thirty-two homes.
And there's two hundred and eighty.
Exactly.
That's amazing technology.
You can't actually go up to a hundred and twenty-eight homes and other things, but we're we're designing it, you know, to really be future proof. So we can, you know, change things as they need to happen.
Is there something that we need to notify P U D that we want to do one of those one hundred and fifty?
Yes, but not yet. We are working.
Too late, I already texted him.
Yeah, we we're working on that marketplace that that I showed you that example from Mason three. That is what we're working right now to set up in the background. And then as fiber gets built in front of a home and we know that you are able to get sign up for service. Then we will reach out to you directly and say, we have fiber in front of your home. Would you like to sign up? So visit the online marketplace. No, no, there there's nothing quite like that, but we will notify you as it becomes available. And then you have the ability to sign up. Now, for those that may not have like Internet service currently at home. Uh, we will have kiosks also set up and realize it's a bit of a drive, but at our Chehalis office where we have our customer service lobbies. Uh, we may, um, although we haven't really talked about this, so I'm probably gonna put my foot in my mouth. We could probably put a kiosk uh somewhere here such as City Hall or wherever it might make sense. But where we get Internet connection so that folks can come in just locally and sign up as they may need to. But uh, we'll have to figure out the the logistics and details as we get a little further.
Yeah, so actually, actually Jeff has a realtor friend and me asked this question a couple of weeks ago. And what your realtor friend said, he said, it's not official, but you play about ten thousand dollars more. Yeah, you have good.
Well, just to just to throw it out there, um, we did a fiber to the home project in um. Saint George, I think it was Saint George, Utah. And we downloaded. The whole Star Trek trilogy in two minutes.
Yeah.
It was nuts. It was.
Wow.
I don't remember the exact, the exact um, a little bit of information here, but it's something like. With fiber, you can transmit the entire contents of the library of Congress from the East Coast to the West Coast in. Three seconds?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's incredible. The the fiber, when when Jeff said earlier that it's a durable technology. Yeah, we're not trying to whoo-whoo like the satellite, satellite and satellite stuff. Those work for for a lot of folks, but fiber has the durability and the speed. So that it can scale up to meet any community's uh future needs, especially, you know, in addition to whatever they might need today. And so it really is a tremendous technology. It's expensive, but we also got outside grant money to build it.
And when we did that, it was eighteen years ago. Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, we started about twenty, twenty-three years ago, back in two thousand. But just the uh, the Chatham School is open up and it just kind of built up.
I can get Internet coming to my home, calling such a box through myself on the carrier, but it wouldn't be anywhere near the quality of this. The high speed. And when I was spending, she was about a year ago, she's trying to become a vampire. And I not texted me, I actually was saying, someone's on board, yep, you can go through us, sign up for Internet. Like, like I don't have to go through one of these. And then she'll just text that on my eleven bill, the Internet charge.
Yeah, so the Open Access Network, you will actually receive the service through one of these providers. However, uh, is it true that at this point you'll likely still get billed? But I don't actually know the answer to that. Will they get the Rocket Bill as part of the P U D bill or does it?
Uh, so model like Mason three and whatnot happens, it's a separate bill coming from your uh advanced stream, your I five or Hood Canal, whoever it is. Um, yeah, that allows us to continue to search out grants, continue our bill to make sure our whole county. Gets Internet and allows the Internet providers to really do their best. They can join, they can join, right? Open Access will allow anybody on.
Um, yeah, yeah, there there are a number of telecommunications companies for whatever reason. They've they've chosen not to participate on Open Access networks like this. But we do know that there are several Internet service providers out there that are willing to be on this.
Well, I'm excited about this. I'm sorry it's two thousand twenty-six.
I wish we could do it right tomorrow, but yeah, we have to get permitting. It took us like a year just to get the contract. Yeah, so there's, it's it's crazy. Now the real work begins where we have to manage it, get the bills out. Yeah.
Before twenty-six, you'll notify us what the cost could be involved for us.
Yes, yeah, yes, yes. We would like to provide uh some routine updates to the city council at whatever interval that makes sense. I don't know if that's every three months or every six months, but maybe we can work with Mayor Shai on what makes the most sense for. Uh, providing those periodic updates as we move along in this project.
Sure, yeah, especially when there's significant advancements or timelines associated with that. Folks love that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, the the one thing though that you can expect is that October two thousand twenty-six. That is a hard deadline from the grant under. So don't expect that date to move out much, if at all, because we have to get it complete by the end of two thousand twenty-six. Otherwise, we lose out on the grant. Yeah, so 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 our our feet is on to the fire that we have to meet that deadline. So so I, you know, I know that doesn't give you a lot of detail, but at least it gives you kind of a hard ending.
Yeah, we can't let you know that um, this summer we are, we're getting everything ready to go out to bid. So by the fall, winter is when we're gonna really be set up to to look at getting the bill started.
Well, there could be a lot more than five hundred to do some.
Could.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you gentlemen for coming down.
I think years ago, I have a some input.
All right, Bob, go ahead.
A few years ago, a few years ago, we had somebody come through and put cable up. I think they had to get a permit for a pole and they use the same infrastructure for future like these guys are doing. So somebody might look into that. There might already be some lines there. I don't know if they're fiber, but I assume they are. It's it's not been ten years ago that they did it. Thanks.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that. They came into the city. They needed um, they needed some uh permits to uh move through our right-of-ways. Um, I think it was when they were installing the new cell phone tower out on the Macbator Road. I think they ran uh fiber from I five out to the cell phone tower for its connection. So. I think that's what it was related to.
This system.
I don't think they've offered service to residential business customers.
They have not. I think I also were at the time, they said something about. Offering a service um to residents and City Hall. Um, and it, they never have.
We have designed it to fit every.
Sure. Yeah, we like your promise better than. All right, uh, moving on to city business item number one, council to consider ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one, the compost procurement.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
The motion of Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one. Is there a second?
Good.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. I had a lot of things I could say. Cut me off. So I don't have to say them.
Oh, it's all right. It is discussion time.
It is discussion time.
Yeah.
I don't want to ruin a good thing.
Roll, roll, yeah.
Um, I did attend a solid waste utility meeting um this week and they did have representatives from the Department of Ecology on there. In fact, the head of the organization or the head of the department that's gonna handle this uh new compost procurement system. Uh, gave a presentation about it. Um, this really is kind of a part one of a two-part um effort by the state, which is probably. Not exciting to everybody, but um, the first part is to get this system in place where um compost has a place to go. Which obviously there already is here with LeMay. Um, but then also getting getting municipalities and corporations to use the compost. And once this system is in place, um, the state wants to enact um. A collection service requirement for um household food wastes. And so those food waste can get collected, diverted from the landfills and moved to that compost. And so we need to have a system, a a healthy system in place to use all this compost before we start adding more to it. And so that's what that's what this is, is a step one.
All that paperwork and the management and reporting, is that?
Yeah, as far.
Your plate or?
Yeah, as far as this, there is a few, a few things that that the City Hall needs to do. There's a report that we need to do occasionally that talks about our um posting use of our efforts. If we didn't, we didn't do any projects that could have benefited from compost, we can just say. We didn't do any projects, we didn't use any compost. You know, it's it's not a, it's just a little bit of paperwork, which City Hall specializes in, rightly so. You could, yeah, so you could use it. I mean, I'm I'm no composting expert, but you could use it for all all kinds of things, you know? We could use it in the parks. Um, we could use it for. I don't know, we might use it for different landscaping things.
When they list off erosion control.
Yeah.
Moisture, you know, like retention.
Yeah, it's, I think it's already available to you if you go up to the landfill to get it. You could check with the Lewis County landfill.
It definitely costs a good thing, because right now food waste is going in the lake, they got the trash.
Yeah, so we can go up and we can get it back after they've ran it through their processes for free as as V A R resident.
It's good, like the whole, the whole thing is just to divert as much waste from the landfill to other beneficial uses. It's not a bad thing. All right, that's what I had to say.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So we can get it to LeMay, we don't put it on site here.
LeMay collects it, no, LeMay collects it and takes it to um a site with Lewis County Solid Waste.
Okay.
Not, it does not stay here in V A R.
So if we need it, then you just.
Exactly, yeah, we could go up there and get it. Any other discussion? All those in favor of ordinance twenty-three dash zero one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Highly, highly contested ordinance, I know.
Sorry.
All right, council to consider to discuss vacated F Street, um, south of. Tenth Street, um, and give staff directions on how to proceed. So um. The history of F Street, F Street, south of tenth, um, back in the late nineties, early two thousands. Um, the residents of the of that area back in, back then, um, petitioned the city to vacate that street. So it would be no longer a city street. That way the residents could better maintain it themselves. Um, the city agreed. We have a variety of documents that talk about the, talk about that, all the signatures involved. And the um city right-of-way was uh vacated. And now if you look at the uh maps, you can see all the properties um about each other and there is no city street down the middle. There is a private driveway that currently exists. Uh, the city is not allowed to use public funds to maintain this private driveway. And so it's on the residents to maintain it. There's been, in recent times, there's been a variety of issues that have stemmed um from F Street no longer belonging to the city. Um, from a gate on the south end um that someone installed, so it's no longer a through street. They blocked off their property and uh it's allowed. Um, there's been issues recently with folks. Parking on the private driveway, um, blocking emergency ingress and egress and not just emergency, but any. Um, and law enforcement is unable to um provide any assistance um outside of stern talking to. Um, it is a civil matter, so the courts would need to get involved to clear vehicles from those roads. Um, the city has no authority there. So as you see, there's, there's a variety of issues with that. Through, we we get quite a few um official complaints from residents back there about these issues. And unofficially, they, some of them have been talked to and they would be in favor of the city. Making efforts to reinstate F Street as an official street. And so my question for council is, uh, should we reach out to the residents and get a kind of a, a uh, a feel for it? And uh, if there's a majority, um, I can reach out to the attorney as well as our engineer. About the steps and the amount of money it would take for the city to go about um reinstating this street. Obviously, there has to be a survey. Property lines would have to be adjusted all the way along. Every single person that lived on that street would have their property lines adjusted. A right-of-way would be put in place. So it would be a big endeavor. What is.
I think this. I think the survey, um, there's markers on both sides already where F Street should go. Not, well, I know that um, the first half is marked out on it.
Yeah.
So, what's up? I don't know, I'm new here, but back here.
Sure.
I grew up here. I met my wife right there.
On F Street?
She lived just on the other side of it, on the. The D E Street, yeah, E down, where they just dismantled the trailer.
Yeah.
They, they, she lived in that house when you're twelve.
Yeah, a lot of junk.
So that that was always a road. So at some point, I'm like, I'm reeling this all in. So at some point, the city was like. Hey, you guys live down there, you take care of it. You can have that.
Yes.
And so then it became their property. Like, just like, here you go. And so now for us to have that be part of our, so you know, we have like. City property down there, like for residents to have access to from both sides, emergency vehicles. It's two dead-end roads with no turnaround.
Right.
You'll call it the sack, no?
Right.
This genius idea was that.
But I was, I was.
You were here either.
It wasn't me.
So I'm, I'm gonna say that it, I mean, at some point, like, if we're doing things for the betterment of our community. We're gonna have to open those streets up. I mean, just like our street, you know, tenth street, that it's at some point, I gotta give up some of my yard back to. It's city property. I mean, the waterline comes through there, all that stuff's gonna be replaced. There's a bunch of houses gonna get built up there. I mean, it's gonna happen.
The other issue with that street is the sewer pipes. Because there is no sewer, well, the sewer is, I believe, on E Street.
Sewer does.
Those aren't.
It goes down F Street, but it from, from rumor, it's like a foot deep or something. It's.
So John was just, I know it's kind of off topic, but John was just talking to me about sewer on F, the midpoint of F or so where the new houses are at. South the park. Originally, it was thought that there wasn't sewer that connected from F to Park directly south. But he was looking at some old maps, which is laying on the table over there. And uh, from that, it looks like there was something. Well, he doesn't know if that was a wish list or if they actually built it. But but um, we were talking to the county water department today and water lines do run through there already. So it would make sense that sewer does run there too. So there could be sewer there. They're gonna look into it. Alright, we'll give, we'll give you all a chance here in a second. Alright, so yeah, we have representatives from some of the folks on F Street here tonight.
There, there is a school line behind my property. Between my property and next property and it goes along the line and down the fence that used. Because uh the guy that owned those two pieces of property prior to us, he had, he had a snake with a camera.
Yeah, I know that, I know that there's a, there's mates who remains that run from F, about the midpoint. Yeah, the midpoint of F directly west past some of those new homes.
You guys have a great night, thanks for the information.
John and Evergreen Rural Water, um they, they uh whenever they get a chance, they camera unknown areas. And so John is, is enhancing our map of the sewer system on a regular basis as they find new lines, so.
He's naked, he runs this way, runs south and then went west along the fence line, it's currently out.
Well, this, the city would be able to utilize its own, its own YouTube attorney to help us with that. To help drop, draft those legal documents.
And the attorney isn't, the attorney isn't for the civil issues of it, it's, the attorney is for the s- city taking. Yeah, taking it back.
Right, right, so it would involve, it would involve probably a, a city paid for a survey of that area, so we'd get the lay of the land. They would need to, um part of that would be, you know, how wide is it going to be, is it gonna be a thirty-foot right of way, is it gonna be a forty-foot right of way? You know, those are, those are things to be discussed, discussed.
I believe it's a thirty-foot now.
It probably is similar to E Street.
Cause it's fifteen feet from the center.
You know, and then what does that look like, you know, with fences that are there now and everything? Would we grandfather those in temporarily, um but a person would never be able to rebuild them, you know, lot, lots of unknowns at this point. But that's what happens on a road, a road exists there, right, but a lot of benefits would come from it too.
My, I'm in, I'm in a position where like if there was something passed, it was like all roads come back or whatever, my driveway. G Street, my, I have a few parcels on either side of the road, it cuts right through the middle, so. It's kind of a sticky situation.
That guy moved the bus up.
Me?
No, the, the other guy, yeah.
Oh, I think he's.
Recently, he would been hauling lots of stuff out of it. So I don't know, is you guys pushing him or? Two weeks ago.
Yeah, and that's when he pulled into my driveway, backed up.
He, he was early in the morning, he was hauling several trips out of it.
Yeah, I live right there and he's out there all hours of the night.
Is that the end of heart? Comes down behind you.
Uh Mike, you were saying something about taking people's property.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 like uh re- reacquiring um roadways and like, you know.
This would be a, a mutual agreement, you know, at, at some point, I mean, I mean, if we, if we, if we uh, you know, if we approach the, the folks there that live there. With whatever legal agreement that says, yes, they're interested in doing that, I suppose if we got to a point where nine out of ten people agree. I guess it would be on the, on the council's. You know, decision making whether or not we're gonna say, alright, number ten, we're sorry, or you're outvoted. I don't know what that procedure would look like, but uh we would definitely find out.
I want a motion that we proceed with looking into allocating funds to proceed.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to um. Correct staff to start looking into reacquiring F Street, is there a second? Second, Mr. Hall, Mr. Mr. Hall, discussion. Anyone, anyone else?
But the thing is, the, where the treatment ends, my property line ends past that, so that's why I spent, and I spent ten thousand five hundred dollars. Of my own money asphalting that part of the road, so that's the only thing I would have to negotiate. Would be some funding to come back for what I spent on the road, but the reason I do that is because the certain. Lovely neighbor who fights with everybody was driving up and down spinning gravel on my vehicles. Purposely carrying out my robe because she was mad about the fence, which I've been to court twice over the last few years about that, I've had restraining orders. It's been a pretty big issue, so um, you know, I'm okay with working with you guys to do that, and that's what's best for everybody. But the reason I die pissed is because there's still homeless people that are just down that trail, that just wander up on the property. Now, I'm married now and he's concealed and done things, well, okay, but, you know, it's just not very. Feeling safe when you're a young mom, who, she's fourth grade now, but we've been out here for a few years, so. That was the whole reason, because I found like a plastic container on the back of my property with two of the water, but someone was facing living effects.
I would certainly hope that they would negotiate with me personally, showing thousands of dollars, putting up cedar fencing, hundreds of dollars for sure. And paint, paint it, not only does it add considerable value to my property, but blocks the garbage across the street.
Hopefully, they would negotiate to leave me alone with my fence, but I wanna have to tear it down.
I think everyone would be approached individually, there'd be, you know, my understanding is, at this point, there'd be an agreement with each, each property owner. And everyone would have, have an opportunity to voice, voice their.
We're all open to that, I just want to know, every single neighbor is open to this, including Jennifer who lives behind this lady here. Um, she's texting, she's in yoga meeting. Yeah, that her son could even hit on both because they were so mad about the other neighbor who's joining you online, putting up a fence on her rightfully owned property. They can't park over there, they can't park on Mr. Carson's property. They, they need to tear down their little fence, their little chicken horn fence and park on their property, it's the only place left.
On the narrowest part of F Street, the narrowest area. And all their vehicles, six to eight, I think there's only two people on this rent alone mortgage. All the others are transit people that live with her and they're blocking the road, there's a lot of transportation people.
They've got people living in trailers and everything else on their property, they've got too many people parking up on the road.
Thank you, um, the, the um person that just spoke online, could you identify yourself, please?
Uh, Don Deanna Michaela, down at the end of F Street on eleven oh five.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial to the residents and just beneficial, beneficial to the city as a whole um to, to be able to um maintain and. You know, have a, have a, a through street again, um be able to have our public works, um maintain the street regularly, you know. It's not an issue to get gravel out there and using the grader and everything.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of roads that are, are not in the city still.
We wouldn't have a handout to pay for the gravel, you always said the city. I'm the one that brought up, oh, she's gone. I went to the counter and I said, it's just an idea, but how about seeing if Joe has maybe a half an hour, hour. To come down here and actually have a feedback session with the perpetrator and all of the victims, and there's multiple on the street. And just have a professional business meeting where there's no petting, there's no yelling, there's no texting, there's no phone calls, there's no reading notes. You know, have a feedback session where everybody's involved, I mean, I got involved with the dog biting me and then there was trash room everywhere. We got that issue now, now it's just the F Street and where all the cars are parking, and they bought a new trampoline recently. Well, it doesn't have to go there, it can go on the other side of her property, there's room there, they could bulldoze that chicken fence and put gravel in there. And get all the cars right there, you know, and rather than leaving notes on top.
Is that on the, the, the easement? Do you mean the trampoline's like on the easement?
There is no right of way, that's the problem.
Out of ten residents or thirteen, whatever, they're the only ones on the street that park all the distance, the only one. And that's the narrowest part of the road where all these cars are, so I thought if we get her to come here. And have a calm meeting about all of the issues and, you know, what's to be done.
So, so having some resolve and some defined borders as to where the road is, where easements are or egress. You know, that, that, that has value to you guys, right? So I mean, he, he wasn't able to like, hey, here, we're gonna shell you out money for your fence that you built, you know, I mean, you, you had to do that. Or here, here's money for asphalt, I mean, it, it has some value that these things kind of be tidied up and tightened up and. Lines drawn.
Well, as it is right now, we can't do anything about them blocking the roads, so we're just kind of blocked into our own homes at this point, it's becoming an issue. The sheriff can't do anything about it. It would just be easier for all of us down here at the end if it was incorporated.
Yeah, that's Donnie, right? You know, if someone parks on your property, can you have them towed?
Yeah.
What this, what the easement going through there is gonna take a judge to make the determination, the rules. That, that um, the people using those easements, the easements have to abide by them, and if you look at. I'm not a judge, I'm not a lawyer, I'm making a legal decision, but when I looked at the easement, it worked at the nearest entity. You can see where each of those property owners have property that now comes together in the middle of this easement.
And they have a long driveway that.
Nobody else could tow their cars from the easement, but it could potentially be on their portion of the easement.
Because there is no defined easement in any of the recorded documents, like I just went through that with my neighbor, it's, there was an alley that was.
But for, for inch, for instance, on, on the. The property, on Donnie's property, it is not an easement to F Street. That is her property, that is her driveway. And so she has to use the neighbor's driveway to get through, there isn't an easement that goes down between, it's like a flag lot. Is the way that it is, does that make sense?
Okay, I'm just gonna, you, you know names and I don't know names.
Oh, okay.
So you're talking to the spur that goes off to the west, where you go down there are two houses, one on the north side of the little spur, one on the south.
Yes, so each one of those, that isn't an easement, easement that can, that goes down to those houses. That is their property line down the center, so their driveway, it's actually their dri- there's two driveways. That go down that and to their houses.
Yeah, me and Jennifer's property lines make up our driveway.
Yeah, so that's not an easement at all through there, that is their, their driveway, their property lines.
So Donnie had his fence up today because they kept parking there and that's basically, I think, what they're asking is if the vehicles are parked on. Mike's land or on Donnie's land, can they be towed?
Yeah, I, I see where the, I see where there's a, there's a confusion on, on F Street where that's an easement. But if, i- if somebody was to park in my driveway and block me from getting home.
If you tow a vehicle that's, you're saying is on your property, you're probably not gonna get in trouble criminally. But there is the possibility that they take you to court and prove or convince the judge that, no, no, no. They shouldn't have been able to tow that, that was partially on my property or whatever, and you could potentially have some civil fine, i.e. You get stuck with the tow bill or you get stuck with the tow bill and guess what, it hurt my feelings, therefore I'm gonna get some additional money out of it. It just, it's one of those things, I, I can't get legal advice, but I would definitely speak with an attorney before doing something like that, just.
I spoke with, um, I'm sorry, I spoke with my attorney about this and he told me to. Wait on towing any vehicles off of my property after I got my survey lines and he is going to send a letter out to. The offenders and once they get that letter, they are responsible for the tow bill and everything, once they park on my property again.
Perfect.
So you could do it that way.
Great for taking the initiative on that.
And the tow company owner says, no, the tow company will come out and tow the vehicle just on your request. It has to be done in advance and has your contract written up where I think they call it absconding.
I agree, that's.
Yeah, when they, when they're retrieving a vehicle that's on somebody else's property and we take it to a lot, he said, we're at law, we could be sued. So it has to be all done in advance so that they're legally protected, against liability.
Well, it sounds like everyone, there's, there's no one here saying that they're not in agreement with this, um we had a first and a second. On uh, on directing the city staff to start working on this, um discussion.
The only discussion or question I might have for you is, do I vote on it? Because I'm directly. Involved.
Well. How about this?
I'll be a tiebreaker if I need.
How about this? We all have sewer bills, I guess, not all of you, we all have sewer bills and we all vote on that. We all drive on that road or could drive on that road, so why can't we all vote on that?
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make it.
That's, that's the logic behind that.
Do you already have a designated city attorney?
Oh, yes.
Then maybe you can ask him if you can legally do it for a civil attorney, because I think we'd be to a class action suit. Where everybody pays a little bit to the attorneys, there's so many people involved, without the car parking.
I can ask her, but um, that's, that is certainly not her specialty, her specialty is certainly municipal. There's always full of references.
I'd like that.
Alright, more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, alright, we'll get started on it and we'll have reports for you. And I'm sure, anything, uh, I'm sure you'll keep be, be first to know too, so. Uh, moving on to item number three, uh council to consider. The real estate purchase and sale agreement, um this was not on the agenda um until now, because. I didn't know when it was gonna be ready, became ready yesterday and I picked it up today, so um. To summarize. To summarize, this uh piece of property is located on um between the city shop and the post office. Um, right on highway five oh six, it's vacant. It's a very small piece of property. It's currently owned by longtime residents. Um Kathy Crawford and Carol Broom and they're actually, they have, they have a LLC that represents their entire family for a variety of pro- properties. That they home, they 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 own. Um, they would like, they're moving, they're moving out of town. Um, they're getting up their age and they're, and they're moving out. Um, they would like the city to take possession of this property. Um, they're willing to sell it at the tax, the tax assessed value of twenty seven thousand dollars. Uh, which is far below the market value of a piece of property. If you remember, the city bought our piece of property for. Three times that much money uh just last year um at the, for the appraisal value. Um, so they're really. Doing what they can to to get it to the city. Um, within this agreement, there are a couple of requests that they have. One, that the city maintains it as a park. Um, two, um, if you know the, if you know those uh those ladies, um, they're active um with the Lions Club and they've been part of the May Day Committee. Um, their request is that um those clubs can use the property for free um into the future. They would still have to come in and apply for a parks permit as usual, um but because of the agreement, we would waive uh that twenty five dollar fee or whatever. The city has a similar agreement with Worden Park. Um, when the city um purchased the Worden Park property. Extension from the Assembly of God, um within that agreement, it allows the Assembly of God utilize Worden Park. Um, for free for a number of years as well. Um, that was part of the, the deal for them to sell that part property to us for only. Six thousand dollars, I think is what it was. It was, it was, it was very little money. And so that is the um, the extent of the, the asks that they have, just that it remains. Um, park and open for these organizations to use. If you're familiar with that property, um usually during those um, during those festivals. Um, they set up some pop-up shelters down there and they had vendors and stuff out there in the grass. Um, so it would be city, it would be city maintained at that point. Um, the park, the park board, um. Well, if you look that picture up on the wall up there, that colored picture, that's the two thousand three version Vader. Um, back, way back at the beginning of two thousands, there was a vision for downtown Vader. They got a grant to create this whole thing. Right in that picture, it has this piece of property and there's a small pocket park right there in that picture from twenty years ago.
A little pink area.
Yep, yep. I think there's a little pond there or something, but um, so it's just, it's going back, you know, this, this was envisioned. To be part of the city of Vader for, for decades now. Um, they want to just be um making that happen. So um, as far as where the funds would come from, the city had, if you remember, the city had ARPA, ARPA funds. Um, the city had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of ARPA money. We used ten thousand or so to help with the, the tractor purchase. Um, we use around a little over a hundred um with the other property purchase. And so we still have ample funds available to. Add another piece of our property to the city.
Why do we need another park?
Why do we need other parks? Everyone loves parks.
Not for that price we don't. That's a lot of money for that little piece of crappy uh lawn.
Well, I suppose it depends on. I suppose it depends on, on perspective. I mean, for the, for the market value of the property, it is an extremely good price. Um, they could probably easily sell that for um three times as much.
We don't need another park. We've already got Worden, we've already got the other one. This is just too much property. We've, we've got the other one, other railroad now. Why are we buying all this property? We're, we're not supposed to be buying property.
Well.
It's just too much.
I guess it kinda keeps it from like. Turning into like an, you know, Nike outlet or a McDonald's or something.
Nike outlet, is that the first thing?
I don't know, I was just throwing something corporate out there. The Lions, the Lions is historically always set up there, you know, for various events and, you know, May Day and different stuff.
It would allow.
You know, these, these folks have let, let the Lions utilize the property for free. It's a.
Isn't it adjacent to the shop?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, Bob.
Di- directly west.
Yeah, right along the sidewalk. You know, you, there, there, you could envision a time when the downtown area is built out. Um, and that vacant land that we utilize now for various activities is gone. Um, this would allow, at least to, to a small degree, um some vacant space um in the core of the city there. For different activities, if the city were to, were to have it.
Isn't there a safe from the bank still underground?
The second person that's mentioned a safe from the old bank that used to be on that property.
I'm making motion that we approve the purchase and sales agreement.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the purchase and sale agreement. Uh, we have a second by Mr. Ferguson. Uh, further discussion, um. You know, I, I, I envision the city not just keep, not necessarily just keeping it open grass, um turning it into a. An area with maybe seating areas all the way around, um having some brick walkway through it. Having an area where people could sit and um. And hang out, maybe some lights.
Vendors Saturday market.
Well, you know, I was thinking, we've had discussions from folks that own property in town about food, food trucks. You know, um, that area five oh six is really wide along the sidewalk. It would be perfect to have food trucks pull up there. Right along the sidewalk and then have a spot right there um where people could sit and, you know, enjoy their lunch or whatever. You know, and it's, and it's hard to. You know, it's hard to, you think Vader's been, you know, and it's been empty down there for so long. But things are changing. You know, we've got three active subdivision applications here in town right now. Um, there, there's a good possibility forty brand new homes can be built just this, just this year alone in town.
Did you say four D?
Four, zero, forty new homes uh between those three subdivisions. Um, that's a lot more people looking for things to do. I'm not, there's a, there's a business that's going to be starting downtown, um a, a new business. I don't know. I'm gonna say it anyway. I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, one of the old, the old home, the old original home that was for sale down there, the green one. Um, that Samantha lived in. It's been bought by a company that specializes in bed and breakfasts. They're gonna totally renovate that property back to its original glory and they're gonna have a bed and breakfast downtown. Uh, they're successful in other cities already doing this, so they have a proven track record. Um, and they, they're interested in doing. Perhaps doing other projects downtown as well. And so there are things happening, there are things coming, um and having um some city accessible property there. Could be beneficial. And heck, in the, at Christmas time, we, at Christmas time, we could put a, we could put a tree there.
Well, it has been.
Uh, this purchase and sale agreement, um it's not the final contract. What this will allow the city to do, it, it's, uh, it gives us a period of time. To get a survey done. It gives us a period of time to do the environmental assessment where they come out, test the soil, make sure that the city's not taking on. Liability for a toxic waste or something like that. Um, and then assuming all of those things come back clean and no issues. Then the city has the option to purchase and then the city, and then that would come back to council at that time. That's it? Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of purch- uh approving the purchase and sale agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that concludes the city business. Moving on to public comment. Any members of the public have anything to comment on? Any members online?
Yes, I uh have a comment about uh Vader water system. Counsel and staff hasn't uh approached it. Um, we don't wanna lose it. As part of our infrastructure, the whole worth of town, so, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Bob, for, for reminding, uh reminding us about that, um reminder to council. Uh, we do have until. The end of this year to initiate the process of uh receivership if we're interested in getting our water system back. I'm doing a little bit of research right now, but um it's going to need to come to council um for decisions sooner than later.
That should be.
Will that be more or less expensive for residents with the change?
Well, ideally, it would be the same or less. Um, obviously, there'd have to be um. Documents taken, gotten from Lewis County so that we could do a cost analysis, understand. Um, what it costs, it's costing them to run the system and uh seeing if it's worthwhile for us to do it. It's a lot of work. It's a, it's a, it's a one-year process with a lot of paperwork. Um, and a committee needs to get put together. Before it, receivership would have to take place, would have to have the employees in place and the training in place so that there could be a seamless transfer.
It would be a lot to do, a lot.
Well, no project is overnight thing.
Very expensive.
Well, as they say, if it's worth doing, it's probably not easy.
Yeah.
You remember the discussion you and I had? Maybe a couple years before now, we were hoping IGA and um. I said, wow, look at all the new homes being built in our town, you know, and, and you said. Yeah, there's a lot of old time residents who are not happy about that. They liked it, we're all, not all these people. And you brought up to them, but don't you realize that with a higher, more population, it's gonna help defray. The cost involved for the residents. So a year later, I bring that up to the office staff and I go. No, it's never gonna go down. It's always gonna go up. And I go, hmm, I think I'll have to talk with Joe.
That sounds opinion based.
Well.
Like an opinion based statement.
Here's something.
Not yours, but, not yours, but the quote, the quote.
Point your finger at me about utility rates. Well, here's something with, here's something with sewer. Think about sewer. We have one employee that runs the sewer plant. John helps out sometimes too. The pumps are always running, you know, there's, if, if you can add a hundred homes and it doesn't cost us anymore. To run the sewer plant, right? It's just, the thing is just on, right? It's, it doesn't really change the amount of chemicals we use. It doesn't mean we have to hire another employee, but you have a hundred more homes paying. A hundred dollars a month, whatever your sewer bill is, into it. Exactly, you know, your hundred more, a hundred more homes paying into the same system. The costs don't go up with a hundred more homes putting their waste down the, down the drain. The rates would have to go down or at the very least not go up with inflation, right? I mean, things do go up, our chemical costs go up, our power increases, just like everything else people have to pay for. But with more homes. It, like you said, it defrays those costs, keeps rates from going up, or maybe we could even go down. Every budget season in, in October, November, we reevaluate the sewer rates um and um.
By dividing it out amongst.
Exactly. We figure out exactly what we think it's gonna cost. Drag onto the dollar and we divide it out by the number of people paying, because we know how many people pay. We know how many people don't pay, unfortunately too. Um, and um, and we figure out our sewer rates. And so this year, we did raise our sewer rates a little bit, but it was four dollars a month.
Are there the rares or they're, they don't have to pay because of their situation or something?
There are people that choose not to pay and they are in collections.
So that was two years ago. And now we have from six hundred population to eight fifty, so approximately.
Eight fifty? I think we're still closer to seven hundred.
Yeah, okay, well, a hundred more. So that was two years ago, so how many more people have to move in to get the cost?
Aye.
Well, instead of it going up ten dollars or what were we planning on it going up? Uh, it was.
Chris, never were we, we raised the rates this, this year. There were six, four dollars a month, something like that.
It was four dollars. Two years ago, we were planning on it going up almost thirty to forty dollars a month.
Yeah, if you had been, yeah, Mike's bringing up, when we were, so that, as, as you know, the new wastewater plant is online and operating now. It was a six million dollar project. Um, for, for a decade now, folks that sat up here were worried. That the city would have six million dollars in loans to pay back and your sewer rates would double. And that's what we were looking at for a long time and through a lot of. Wonderful things that had happened, we got the whole thing paid for with grants, basically. And so there are no additional loans related to the construction.
So you're saying, well, I can shut it, reversing it, it's, it's frozen.
Well, it's not frozen because every year we have to figure it out, like the new plant costs us more money with. The chemicals and things like that. So this year, um, well, I guess it was last year, the end of last year. We had to re-figure out what those payments are going to be because of the new costs that were there. So with those extra, you said a hundred homes, whatever it was. We divided that new cost by the bigger number, the hundred homes or, or seven hundred, whatever it was. And that got us our bill. If those seven, if those extra hundred homes weren't there, it would have been divided by six hundred homes. And the bill would have been bigger. So it has saved, these people moving in have saved you money on your sewer bill.
If we own the water system though, we could shut the water off. At, at this point, we can't. Lewis County won't let us shut the water off. Is that true?
That is correct, Bob. Yeah, the, one of the reasons, one of the problems with not having the water system is, you know, there is no valve to shut off someone's sewer bill. When they don't pay their sewer. So the city can't go shut off their sewer. You just, you just can't do it. Normally, your water and sewer utility are together. You don't pay your bill, you shut off the water and then they come and pay their bill. Um, and so that's one of the thing, one of the reasons why some people haven't paid. This isn't a lot of people, but some. Um, they just haven't paid their sewer bill. They have thousands of dollars of back sewer bill. Um, because in county won't. You know, county runs the water system, they won't shut the water off for us, because they're two separate systems. And so one of the reasons to get the water system back. Is that we could enforce um our sewer billings um more regularly. Um, or obviously, these people that don't pay, these bills go to collections. Eventually, they get liens on their houses. When the house sells. The city gets paid its back uh what it's due, but um that's a, that's a long time to wait sometimes.
When I said to your very nice staff, they told me there's a lot of money for me. I don't use, you know, what would be so off your water? And I said, well, my water bill is sixty, then why is my sewer bill eighty going off that? And she said, well, you're true, that's true. You are one of the most frugal people in that town, you know? I use my bath water to wash my car. I use my bath water to water my plants. Nobody goes to that stream. My son called me the frugal Nazi, okay? But I am very frugal. So if the hundred sixty, then why are we paying eighty? And she said, you're basing it off that. We have a.
Space, and it's based off the usage, it's based off the usage and there is a minimum payment amount. But I think the moral of the story is tonight, Joe told you the truth. The more people you save.
That's straight to the horse's mouth.
That's right.
Any other public comment? Hearing that, this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty two P M unless elected officials have anything to say?
No, we did that already.
Goodbye, 7:32 PM, meeting adjourned.